Around and see new single-family in areas of 380 or over in some of the newer areas, you see that on major thoroughfares, there's a buffer zone where you have things like office. And the office is very low-impact. People generally don't like to live with their house right on a four-lane highway. I think that that's an appropriate use for that area.
Do I have a second for approval of the petition?
Second.
Okay, Holly moves to approve petition. Please vote.
John, you didn't vote.
Let me, let's vote again.
Why don't you do it again?
Yes, please.
Vote again.
Everybody done? Looks, I think I clicked.
One more time.
All right, I vote. All right. The approval has been turned down on a four to three. Does that need another motion to deny it, or does that in itself deny it? The motion was to approve the petition.
Mm-hmm. No, it does not need another motion. This was the appeal.
So the petition has been turned down.
That's right.
Okay, moving on to item 7B. Consideration action on ordinance for change in zoning from single-family to office zoning on a lot located at 3301 Ridge Crest Road. Steve?
Hate that picture. Yes, sir. This is a request by Darrell Higginson. This is the old Southside Baptist Church, I believe. They're no longer in existence. And they have put this structure up for sale. It's been bought. And the proposal here is to change from single-family to, sorry, single-family to office. The idea is to leave the church where it sits. There's plenty of parking there. It is contiguous with a general retail zoning right next door. Also a general retail across the street and plant development office across the street. So the zoning is proper. The idea is to remodel the interior of the church itself and build individual offices there. It has plenty of parking. It kind of makes sense close to the hospital. Maybe some more doctors office or such as that. But church is no longer existing and that's what they wish to do with this piece of property. We sent notices out to surrounding properties. We sent out eight property notices. We got one back that was in favor of petition. We didn't get any in opposition. I took it to planning and zoning last week and they recommended approval by a vote of six to zero.
Anybody have any questions for Steve? Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
I'll now open this up to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this, please come forward and give your name and address. Anyone wishing to oppose this, please come forward and give your name and address. All right, the public hearing is closed. This time I'll entertain a motion to recommend approval of this petition. I'd make the motion for approval if it could. Okay, John?
Second.
Cedric? All right, vote please. Pass at seven zero. Thank you. Next item is 7C. Consideration. Consideration and action on an ordinance or a conditional use permit auto sales in a general retail zoning on a lot located at 5900 Wesley.
Yes, sir. This is a request by O.G. Stevens. They actually have a car lot existing right now. It's called Diamond Crest back up this way on Wesley. You may know where it is. Pretty close to Dollar General. This is El Harmon Car Lot. Been there for years and years. And they want to move that dealership or that car lot up here to this location here. A lot of you will remember about five or six years ago, we issued a conditional use permit for this property for a car lot. The conditional use permit was issued. One of the caveats they put with the, when they issued the permit was once the owner left, that that conditional use permit went away and you would have to ask again. Sometimes they leave them, sometimes they take them, but they actually took them on this one. Yes. They, this lot, this lot's a little challenging as far as landscaping goes. And the last tenant was there and did a very poor job of it. And I've talked to them about that. And this is their proposal to try to straighten that out there. I have no doubt that they have plans to repave the parking lot and do some, do some plantings there to spruce it up, make it look a little better. They will leave that location they're at now and move here. I sent letters out to, I'm all over the place. I sent letters out to property owners, adjacent property owners on this property. We sent thirteen out. That's not true. We sent, we sent eight out, I'm sorry. We got two back. It was in favor of it. One was the bank across the street. The other one was Bottle Cap Alley. They needed one of those heading opposition to it. And I said, thought it would be a good idea. I took this to P&amp;Z last Monday and they recommended to approve the conditional use permit by a vote of six to zero.
The Duang's Garage area behind that, is that totally a separate business?
That's a separate place, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think it's shared on that. Yeah, I'm sorry. Derek, you can say it right behind it there.
On a conditional use permit, can't we require things and put that in as an ordinance?
Yes, sir. You sure can.
Other than just, well, we're gonna kind of make it look like this?
Yes, yeah. You can, you can do lots of things with it.
Yeah, I mean, oh, I'm sorry, we got a public hearing first.
Yes.
Does staff think that this is the highest and best use for this property or good use for this property?
It appears that way. We had, we had a situation a while back. We thought we were gonna put a ton of car wash on it. It was an opportunity to sell it. The issue came up with noise. That's probably a good idea that it didn't happen now because I've seen those before. They do create a lot of noise. I don't think that would have been as good a use as this would be for it.
You might have found one that's worse.
Yes. Yeah, that's, that's the one, that's the one that wanted to go there.
You might have found one that's worse.
Sorry, that's the one that wanted to go there. As far as I know, that is the only interest that I've seen on this lot was that particular. And I thought that deal was gonna happen. In retrospect, I'm kind of glad it did. And it got pretty hairy for a while.
I'll say my opinions for a minute.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
This time I'll open it up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this, please come up and give your name and address.
Hi, I'm O.G. Stevens. 56 Glen Lane McKinney. And I represent Diamond Crest Auto Sales. Like Steve said, we have been at the previous location for five years. And when we got the conditional use permit before, they asked, you know, for us to do the landscaping. And we did. If you remember how that lot was before, it was horrible. It took us forever to get rid of all the trash that was there. We made it better. But we feel that we need a better location, and that location is better for us. And we do plan on going in, doing the sidewalk in the front. The asphalt's already there. We would go back and do the, what is it called? The?
Resurfacing.
The resurfacing, thank you. And do the landscaping, that, you know, and do the landscaping.
What about your existing site?
I'm sorry?
What about your existing site?
We have been leasing that place. This place that we want to lease, we have a contract. If this goes through for two years, and in two years, they plan to sell it to us.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak in favor of? Okay, anybody wishing to speak against this? All right, at this time I will close the public hearing on this item. Unless counsel's got any comments or anything, I'll... Again?
Yes. I think between, between Joe Ramsey and I-30 on Wesley Street, this is one of the worst lots and least utilized, I guess, lots. And it has been for as long as I can remember. I don't remember it ever being well-used. And I think a used car lot is not, is not a highest and best use. It's a blighted, we don't get hardly any property taxes off of it and no sales tax off of it. And it's just not a good look for our community. You have banks all around here. And it just, having a car lot right there in the middle of our, of our city, I don't think is, is the best use. So I'm against it generally. If the council is for it, then I strongly suggest putting something in the conditional use permit that requires resurfacing, requires the sidewalk, it requires the landscaping as a condition of the permit. So at least we get some improvement to, to this lot. And not just a, you know, a well-meaning promise, but, but actually something with some teeth. Otherwise, I think it's gonna sit there and keep looking like this for another 20 years or whatever.
Steve, in this proposed landscaping, is that a requirement as part of the conditional use? Or is it just a nice idea?
I don't know. The, that lot is a challenge to landscape if you, if you want to meet it by code. It is, the time you deal with the code as for, there's no way that it's gonna, it's gonna do what they need to do. I don't really know what their plan is. What she showed me was that was their idea of how she was gonna do it. But I think you can, but you can be very specific about what you, how you want to see it.
If you wait for the right developer, it's not much of a challenge because somebody will come in here and put in something that, that they can afford to do the kind of update that needs to be done. But if you just take, you know, the first folks to come along. Diamond Crest is near where I live. It's not, I mean, I'm not down on them. It's, I don't think it's a bad business. I did notice driving down, that place hasn't been repaved in five years. It's, you know, there's still, the cars are parked kind of on grass and gravel. And I'm just concerned we're gonna have the same kind of situation here. Used car lots are just not a desirable use in the middle of your community. And this is right smack on our main drag. I just don't, you know, that's a good place for a restaurant or, you know, you know, you've got banks, other kinds of uses. Not a, not a used car lot.
But I don't disagree with you on that. Personally, I just don't see someone putting a bank or a restaurant in front of a garage. That's a pretty messy, noisy, dirty garage there.
I think someone would have to buy both, both of those lots and put it together.
And the brands have been there a long, long time. So I don't know about that.
My feeling is it's been a used car lot for quite a while. I'd rather see cars in there than just an empty vacant lot sitting there waiting for somebody to come along. My personal opinion.
I understand. I'd rather wait, get a private choice.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the conditional use permit?
I'll move that we approve it, subject to some of the conditions that Mr. Money mentioned, including paving and landscaping and that sort of thing for this lot. Some of the improvements that, that can...
Okay, I think we need to be specific here, so we've got to...
Okay, specific that it be paved.
Paved.
To whatever. I don't know how specific you want to be. I guess we'll get, Mr. Wright, tell us about that. I don't know.
I just want to be sure that if we approve this, that we all agree that that's what we want. But I've said several things.
Portion that lot is just gravel at the present time.
Yeah, I'd say pave it and landscape it up to code. And, and then, whether they survive for a long time, it looks nice.
I got a motion. I need a clarification.
Paving to the landscaping. There's a sidewalk that was mentioned.
Anything else?
I don't know. I guess they're not gonna do anything to the back of the building except the building that's there is gonna block the garage. Is that right?
Yes, currently doesn't. All right, I have a motion. I have a motion to approve the conditional use permit with the caveat that includes paving of the lot, landscaping, and the addition of the sidewalk.
Wait, before you second that, you should probably put a time requirement on that. Because with that one, it's not enforceable.
Part of this is a CO?
You can make that again. Yeah, I mean, that can be a condition of the CO. Because y'all need to be specific about landscaping, I'm sorry.
Can we do what?
Be specific about, about what you want on landscaping. I think that's gonna be looking for it.
I'm not the guy to be talking to about landscaping.
I don't know what the code requires, but I don't understand why we would, why we would require less of them than we require of other businesses that are coming in.
Right. To make sure they got enough parking for the vehicles there. If you, if you do it by the ordinance, you're gonna have to take, you're gonna have to take 10 foot from the property line off of Eastland, 10 foot off the property line from Wesley. And all that would have to be grass and landscaped. You'd have to build a buffer down the other side of the bank with some kind of grass dripping there also. My concern, or their concern, it's not really mine. Their concern is gonna be is how many, how many cars does that take away from the property? If you're, if you're saying, I want to have the direction to tell them, here's what you gotta do.
When they proposed landscaping, did they not, were they not considering that at that time?
No. No, I think part of, part of the conditional use being the way the law is, I think that we'd like to see something a little different here so that they can utilize the whole piece of property. Otherwise, it may not be worth. They may not want to do it. If they've gotta completely do all that, it probably won't work out. Because if you gotta take it, if you gotta take it 10 foot from the property line off the front and 10 foot off the side, that property line, I don't know where it is, but it'll, it'll weigh up in there and you start taking out places.
I'll remove, Mayor, I'll remove landscaping from my motion.
I would like, I'd like to hold them to something though. Cause I don't, I don't want to get this thing done and do a CO and then y'all are calling me going, what did you do?
That'd be your fault.
Yeah, I know. That's where I'm going.
Maybe at least across Wesley Street, get, get some landscaping buffer or, I mean, otherwise it's just a...
Can C. talk? I know you've closed it.
And what?
Can, can the owner talk?
So that we understand what's...
Okay, so what we're planning to do on this side, we are gonna have to cut into the asphalt. So we would cut to put the...
When you say this side?
Where the bushes are, the Eastland side.
I bet the mouse will move if you use the mouse right here.
Right there. We were kind of basing this on what Bottle Cap Alley has. Cause then one side they have the, what's that, the myrtle trees. And that's what we put the little trees on, this side. And on the other side, they have just the little evergreens, the smaller evergreens. And then they have the red, what do you call it?
Riptide.
Right. And then in the front, we propose to do like two little rock gardens and put like maybe like the knockout roses and, or maybe a ducka plant or something that would grow and doesn't require a whole lot of water.
What kind of timeframe were you looking at being able to do this? If we approved this and you accepted and decided to move, how long do you need to put landscaping in?
We had, we were going to sign the lease for August 2nd, but we've already decided not to do that. Probably September or October. Cause we don't want to move in until everything's pretty much done. The owners of the property are going in and doing the sidewalk in the front. Cause you only see sidewalk. There's only sidewalk here right now. And then this part over here doesn't have sidewalk. It's just grass and dirt that has built up over time.
So you're gonna put sidewalk?
And we're gonna do a sidewalk there. So the sidewalk will continue. And then we'll do the trees here, the rock garden here, over here. And then we'll bushes here and some right there too by the stop sign.
So if in the conditional use permit, we said the landscaping as proposed, be completed no less than 120 days?
Right, yeah.
That would give you sufficient time to?
Exactly.
Do it without burden. That would be fine. Okay, so the landscape as proposed.
Thank you.
And will the, will the paving of the parking lot be done up to whatever our code requirement is?
Yeah, I mean, she has to get based there. So basically they can overlay it. I mean, that's, that's not probably an issue there.
Okay. All right, so...
Up to, up to wherever our code is?
We can put a condition to approve by Director of Public Works, the pavement. You can, you can look at that and see if this...
Okay, so Jerry, if I can ask for a clarification, what I have on your motion is approve the conditional use permit, but it also includes paving the lot, doing landscape as proposed, and complete that within 120 days and add the sidewalk. Am I clear in what you've said?
Complete the sidewalk, I think, yes. Complete the sidewalk. I think there's portion of sidewalk already there.
And John, you agree with that?
Yes.
Any other discussion? If not, please vote. Okay, so we have a six to one. Okay.
Is there, can I just make a comment? Is there any way we could, when we bring these issues up for public hearings that P&amp;Z has met on, that we could, they could come before us after the P&amp;Z has prepared their minutes and so council members could benefit from any of the debate or any of the issues that went on in those meetings?
The minutes?
Yeah.
The minutes has to be approved by that governing body before we submit it to you.
So that would slow down the process? It'd slow down to two minutes?
We can probably...
They made the week before we made.
Yeah.
Some days we made the day before. That next month it's otherwise.
So it would add a month, but let you strike.
All right, moving right along. We have an ordinance as a resolution. Next is item 10, City Staff Council Reports. First item is TMPA. You read the statement here, a press release. Says Texas Municipal Power Agency has notified the Electric Reliability Council of Texas, ERCOT, to allow to begin seasonal operation for its 470 megawatt Givens Creek Steam Electric Station. ERCOT manages most of the Texas electric grid. If the request is approved by ERCOT, then it's expected that TMPA will shut down operations of its generation on October 17th, 2017, and then operate during the summer season in 2018. Seasonal operational periods will begin on June 1st and end on September 30th of each year. TMPA will continue to operate its transmission system and finalize reclamation of its former lignite mine. Now that's a result of the person that was going to buy the power station has basically never met the requirements. They never came forward with the money even though they'd agreed to. And so that's kind of a dead issue. There's been three other people that bid that it's, what they requested was each of the member cities would agree to sign on to draw their power from that particular station, but it would be at a price higher than we can buy it on the regular grid. So TMPA was not overly excited about signing up on that. So what this does is this sets it up and the budget would be adjusted. As far as the employees, they would go from 100 employees down to about 20. That would be necessary just to maintain that for the generation portion. The transmission portion and the reclamation of the mining area, which is almost 10,000 acres down there, will continue. So I'll be happy to answer any question on what TMPA has done or why. Okay. Next item is Report on Newly Elected Officers Conference. John?
Yes. On July 12th, I went to Round Rock for my newly elected conference to learn all about TMPA and what it's all about. And Thursday, July 13th, I reported in and registered for the first series of meetings. And I understand this series was a little bit different from previous meetings. I didn't get to pick and choose. I went in there at 7:30, I got out at 5:00 PM. I attended everything they had going that day. And I didn't list them here, but some of the things they talked about was leadership, finance, emergency services, utilities, TV, movie, internet, animal control, everything a city could possibly even think about having under their purview. Met and conversed with several council members of neighboring cities, Rockwall, Rowlett, Emery, Parish, Cleveland. And many of our cities, including those I just mentioned, have some very serious problems, more so than ours. How would you want to have some of theirs problems? Such as Rowlett, they just basically replaced their whole city council. Their newest city council member is their senior council member. And she's, she just served her first city council meeting. So she's even senior to their mayor. So wouldn't want to be that way. Anyway, Friday, again, we met at 8:00 AM and continued up until noon and discussed even more items. And after that, we left. Two of the more important items we did discuss was leadership in our cities, how to become an effective leader. And the other one detailed state bills being presented before the state legislature. These state bills are ones we really need to keep in our purview because they directly affect the way we govern, raise and use our taxes, how annexation occurs. And some of them could be detrimental to the law way of governing our cities. So we really need to keep an eye on how these bills go before our state legislature. And if we don't agree with them, we need to contact our representative. That's my report.
Okay, thank you. Anybody? All right, moving right along.
Well, I have one more item. We did meet our non-governmental organizations.
I didn't talk about that.
We're not gonna talk about it. I need to get it on the agenda for next month when I get out.
Next item is June 2017 financials. Summer?
Thank you, Mayor. These will be the financials as of June 30th. We're 75% through the year. Through June, general fund revenues are at 18.5 million or 83% of expected collections. Expenditures are at 16.7 million or 72% of budgeted expectations. Sales tax year-to-date through June, collections are up 643,000 or 12% compared to the same time last fiscal year through June. There's the trend you kind of see on the upward. Down at the bottom, you'll see our sales tax target, year-to-date actual sales. And then the remaining sales tax to collect to meet the increase that we budgeted last year is 1.4 million, which I believe will be okay after, especially after July's sales tax as well. Comparison cities. Current period collections of 625,000 were remitted in June of 17, an increase of 5.4% compared to June of 16. These were taxes collected in April, reported to the state in May, and then of course, received by us in June. And then you'll see sales, sales tax, the city-only portion for City of Greenville. Kind of give you an idea. And then, history of just June. So a little bit down from June of 15, but up from June of 16. So we're still on the upward trend. of 16, so we're still on the upward trend, close to 600,000 for just the month of June. Water and sewer revenues through June are at 9 million or 73% of budgeted expectations. And then hotel motel tax through June is increased 41,000 or 10% over the prior year at the same exact year-to-date time. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you, Summer. All right, item 11, City Council Discussion Proposal Gen Items. John?
Yes. Yes, we had our non-governmental organization funding meeting, committee meeting, and I'd like to get that on the agenda for next month.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, one of, I know we said before, I need two people to join me. In asking for a vote to require more than that one eight and a half to 11 sheet of paper that shows millions of dollars of improvement on that 380 contract that Mr. May and Mr. Weeks addressed, your incentives to be heard. If anyone would like to join me, I need two people. I don't know how to ask this, whether they need to report to Carol or call me, I don't wanna, I'll do this correct way, but if two people wanted to join me, I'd still like to see a vote to require forensic audit, something more than one eight and a half to 11 sheet of paper.
You'll need to submit a request, and two other council members would need to submit a follow-up that they would agree to support it.
If they'd like to give my number is, if you don't have it.
No, it would be on an email going to Carol.
Email, you find it, Carol.
Any other?
I have a question about that. Where, if we do this, where are we gonna get the money? Do we have the money to pay for this forensic audit? And who's gonna do it? Cause I'm interested, but how are we gonna afford? Where's the money gonna come from? And I don't wanna put money on the spot.
There is no money, but as most of you know, the city council always can amend the budget and tap into the fund balance. They do have that authority. However, again, three council members must notify city secretary to put an amendment to the budget on the agenda, and where the fund is gonna come from, in this case, is gonna be general fund, and we put that item before you for your consideration.
But the request would be, I wanna see it on the agenda, not necessarily a budget adjustment.
Well, along the request is how to fund that request. In this case, we are talking about.
Wouldn't that be discussed during the meeting? I mean, all we're talking about is, I wanna see something on the agenda.
Well, we can do that, and then we have to come back again. I'm sorry. What you are saying, Mayor, then it's gonna be two process. What I'm saying is one process, request to come before, three council members put a request before the city council for their consideration to do a forensic auditing, and the funding source comes from general fund, either 50,000, 100,000, or 200,000, whatever that number might be.
I have a response, yes, I have two subjects, but I had this on my list. I have no appetite for a $50,000 forensic audit.
I don't wanna get into discussion on that.
I'm perfectly fine getting something on the agenda to talk about it more.
We have an agenda request. I wanna cut back on going into long details and conversations about an agenda item. What I'd like to do is give an identification of something that we wanna put on the agenda.
Okay. And I would like to have a productive discussion about our animal shelter situation, that, where there are solutions offered that we can discuss and vote on. And I saw something, an email, I think, about downtown, some.
Revitalization.
RFQs, somebody, and it just says, what I saw just said, council needs to let us know what the scope of work is. Well.
Well, basically, the council asked us to send requests for qualification, and we have done that. And then we analyzed those qualifications, and we gave you three, top three. And this is not initiated by the staff, it's initiated by the council, and either a subcommittee of the council can select one of them, and then again, like Ms. Collier mentioned, if the council wanna proceed with that process, that can be voted and then funded subsequently through that same process.
And I'd like to refer that to one of the committees, and I don't know whether that's neighborhood development, or if it's appearance, or if we get an ad hoc downtown committee, but I'd like to refer that, or have a discussion to refer that to a committee.
The economic development? Because it's going to address doing stuff downtown to approve it for economic development, to bring tourism convention, and that's James, John, and Brent. So that committee should meet and come forward, that wouldn't be an agenda item yet. And on the animal shelter, are you talking the animal advisory board getting together?
Well, I mean, we heard some things here from a number of different people tonight about issues that are there that reflect the same issues we've seen in numerous emails. And I don't want it to just be they come and talk, and we don't hear any, we don't provide them any feedback or work toward any kind of solution. I don't want it to just die on the vine here. And so I would like a follow-up, whether that needs to be in a month, or six weeks, or sometime where Brandon and they come back and say, here's what we're working toward, or here's the funding we need, here's policy changes, we need counsel from council, but staff needs to take the initiative to address these concerns and bring them back to us, I think.
Yeah, I think that the animal control or the animal committee needs to meet with the staff representatives and come forward with recommendations.
At a time when the committee members can meet, not when dictated to regarding when and where and how often they meet. Great.
Anything else?
Yes, the comprehensive plan, I understand, was created in 2004, is that right? It's now 2017, and I think that it would be prudent for us to reevaluate our comprehensive plan, given the increase in growth and progress and people who wish to come here and develop and spend money and build homes.
Can I comment on that, Mayor?
Yes.
Again, if we have to update our comprehensive plan, we are talking about another hundred thousand dollars.
Isn't it, aren't we supposed to do one every five years though? I mean, isn't that best practice?
Well, not necessarily, but if you are a fast-growing city like Frisco, Allen, that they just exponentially had growth, yes, but not Greenville. I mean, we have seen a lot of growth in retail and commercial, but when you look at our population, we haven't had maybe 1% to 2% growth. And whether or not that is gonna warrant to spend 100 or 200,000 dollars to upgrade your comprehensive plan is a judgment call.
I just thought we might be able to do that, like we've been doing our city planning. We have many experts here within the city.
No.
And as we have been trying to improve our city internally, maybe we could internally review where we are. But if that's not legal, if possible, then we certainly won't be in compliance with the law.
Well, like Mr. Money mentioned, is a tool that is nice to have, and I do agree with him, it's not mandatory, but in a city industry, they do that, especially fast-growing community, they have to do that. I do 100% agree, or 200% agree with Mr. Money. But again, our population is been about 1% to 2%, and again, we do have a lot of retail and commercial, but residential, we haven't had a growth that warrants to spend 100 or maybe even 200, 150,000 dollars to do upgrade or comprehensive plan. But again, that's a judgment call for the city council.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, moving on, we have Boarding Commission minutes from the Board of Development and from the post-event of the Dallas Symphony Orchestra. Anybody have any questions or comments? Does anything else needs to be brought before the city council? If not, at 7:44, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending.